Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November 21st Millis School Committee meeting. First I'll announce the meeting is being recorded and can be viewed on Mondays at 7:00 p.m. on Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 37. All meeting videos are also posted at the Millis Public Schools website under the School Committee section. We'll start with, uh, Roka, La Soul, present.
Present.
Superintendent.
Here.
Superintendent. You switched it up over there on me, come on. Student representative?
Yeah.
Hello. Judy, do we have anybody signing for open session?
We do not.
Okay. Um, so, to start the meeting, I will hand it over to the superintendent.
We have a couple of special announcements to start the meeting. I am very pleased, and I'd like the Kraus family, Julia and her family, to come on You can have a seat if you'd like. I am very pleased to announce the National School Development Council Award for Academic Growth and Student Leadership and Learning to Julia Kraus. Julia never misses an opportunity to go above and beyond. She has an impressive work ethic. She approaches every activity with enthusiasm. Julia has been an athlete throughout high school, and this year she was selected by her teammates to be the captain of both the Varsity Girls Soccer Team and the Varsity Winter Track Team. Julia is also Vice President of the Millis Chapter of the National Honor Society, a board member on the Chemistry Club, Vice President of Students Against Destructive Decisions, and she served as co-president of the Class of 2018 Student Council for three years. She is also a member of Peer Leaders Club, the Common Ground Club, Junior Leos Club, Amnesty International Club, the Art Club, and Youth in Government. Julia was chosen to participate in the HOBE Youth Leadership Seminar during her sophomore year and has continued to volunteer at HOBE events. Through her active participation in all of these clubs, Julia has organized and contributed to dozens of community service projects throughout the school and happened to be on the state championship soccer team this year. So it's our pleasure, Julia, to present you this award.
Congratulations. Want to do a picture?
Yes.
Congratulations.
I'm like... Did you hear too long?
Yes.
Nancy.
Okay.
Hey, everybody.
Raise that.
I know.
You're not along. Oh, that's fine.
All right, I'm gonna say, one, two, three, cheese, one, two, three, cheese. I'm gonna do one this way, too. No, I can't, I won't get that.
Why should you do it just Nancy? Your phone might be better than mine, I'm not sure.
Yeah, put her, yeah, in the middle of mine. There you go. All righty, one more time, one, two, three, cheese. I'm gonna do one on mine just because.
There's just probably a problem.
One, two, perfect, awesome.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
These are some of her favorite things to do. So we also want to invite Catherine Gavoni family to come on up.
of Academic Excellence provided by the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. Having duly qualified under the standards prescribed by the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, you are hereby awarded the Certificate of Academic Excellence. Kat has been a leader in our building since the day she started at Millis High School. Kat is an impressive athlete and has been a valued member of the Varsity Tennis Team, Varsity Soccer Team, and the Varsity Gymnastics Team throughout high school. She served as co-president of Student Council for the Class of 2018 for three years and is treasurer of the Leos Club for her sophomore, junior, and senior year. Kat has participated in many individual volunteer activities. She's helped to organize several community service projects. She was selected as a student ambassador to attend the HOBE Youth Leadership Conference her sophomore year. She's a leader in Amnesty International Club and Students Against Destructive Decisions. She served on the Prom Committee during her junior year. Kat tutors students in the high school, middle school, and Clyde Brown Elementary School. Last year Kat was awarded the Bowden College Book Award in recognition for her outstanding service and her passion for inquiry. She has won several other academic awards throughout her freshman, sophomore, and junior years, including the Excellence in Spanish Award, the Physical Education Award, and an Excellence in Math and Science Award. Congratulations, Kat.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Want to watch her?
Okay.
Hey, where's Maria? Oops. She went. Oh, boy. They don't want to film.
Sure. All family members are welcome.
Come on, Michael, come on.
Come on, Michael.
Come on.
The more the merrier.
Especially when you can stand in front.
Good job.
Exactly.
You're gonna have to stagger a little bit though. Come in, go for it.
If you'd like to get in there now.
You're still in.
You don't have to be, you're good.
All right.
Can you get us all, Judy?
I can. If you're gonna be smaller than I'd like, but I just wanted to get you in.
Nothing wrong with smaller, huh?
There you go. Ready? One, two, three, cheese. And again, cheese. I'm gonna use my camera once. All right, and again, one, two, three, cheese.
Wait, here, just get the camera. And then we'll get Catherine.
All right. Oh, yeah, right. And one, two, oh, he needs to smile.
Yeah.
And again. Perfect.
Congratulations.
He was so happy to be here.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. That's why it started me. Yes. I looked at him, said, you need to smile, 'cause he didn't want to smile. They can Photoshop in a smile, isn't it?
All right, so, with that, we'll go to the action items. First, we have a consideration to approve the 1/24/17 Working Session School Committee Minutes.
Madam Chair? I make a motion to approve the January 24th, 2017 Working Session School Committee Minutes.
Second.
It's removed and seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Abode? Motion carries. We also have a consideration to approve the 11/7/17 School Committee Meeting Minutes.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Catalano?
Make a motion to approve the 11/7/17 School Committee Meeting Minutes.
It's removed and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Abode? Motion carries. Consideration to approve the first reading of revised policy number 1.16 Equal Educational Opportunities.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Catalano?
I would actually make a motion that we waive the first reading of all three policies, so 1.16, 1.16.2, and 4.22, and go directly to a second reading.
Second.
It's removed and seconded to waive the first reading of 1.16, 1.16.2, and 4.22. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Abode? Motion carries.
Madam Chair? Since we passed these, well, I'll speak to 1.16 and 1.16.2, which we passed last year in May of 2016. Since that time, two more protected categories have been created in Massachusetts, and we need to add them to these policies so that the homeless students, or students without housing, and immigrant students are also covered under the nondiscrimination policy 1.16 and are also afforded equal opportunities under 1.16.2. So the only changes to those policies are the addition of the four words, adding those two protected categories.
So in our packets, we have the old version of each, 1.16 and 1.16.2, with on the new version, the additional language that you just mentioned highlighted.
Madam Chair?
La Soul.
Instead of having to read the policies all over again, could we just vote to add in the four, the words? No, we have to read the whole policy again?
We do. Madam Chair?
Mr. Catalano?
I'll take, I'll do the first reading, or the second reading of 1.16. Equal access to education, nondiscrimination. Millis Public Schools has the responsibility to overcome, insofar as possible, any barriers that prevent children from achieving their potential. The public school system will do its part. This commitment to the community is affirmed by the following statements, that the school committee intends to: One, promote the rights and responsibilities of all individuals set, as set forth in the state and federal constitutions, pertinent legislation, and applicable judicial interpretations. Two, encourage positive experiences and human values for children, youth, and adults, all of whom have differing personal and family characteristics and who come from various socioeconomic, racial, and ethnic groups. Three, work towards a more integrated society and to enlist the support of individuals as well as groups and agencies, both private and governmental, in such an effort. Four, use all appropriate communication and action techniques to air and reduce the grievances of individuals and groups. Five, carefully consider in all decisions made within the school system the potential benefits or adverse consequences that those decisions might have on the human relations aspects of all segments of society. Six, initiate a process of reviewing policies and practices of the school system in order to achieve, to the greatest extent possible, the objectives of this statement. The committee's policy of nondiscrimination will extend to students, staff, the general public, and individuals with whom it does business. No person shall be excluded from or discriminated against in admission to a public school of any town or in obtaining the advantages, privileges, and courses of study of such public school on account of race, color, sex, gender identity, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, or disability, and housing or immigration status. If someone has a complaint or feels that they've been discriminated against because of their race, color, sex, gender identity, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, or disability, their complaint shall be registered with the Title IX Compliance Officer. First reading, second reading, November 21st, 2017. So the first reading was waived, and the second reading occurred tonight.
I'll schedule the third reading for our next meeting on the...
Madam Chair?
Mr. Catalano?
I'll read the second read, the first reading of 1.16.2, Extracurricular Activities Equal Access Equal Educational Opportunities. The first reading was waived, the second reading is occurring tonight, November 21st. In recognition of the diversified characteristics and needs of our students, and with the keen desire to be responsive to them, the school committee will make every effort to protect the dignity of the students as individuals. It will also offer careful consideration and sympathetic understanding of their personal feelings, particularly with reference to their race, color, sex, gender identity, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, or physical and intellectual differences, and housing or immigration status. To accomplish this, the committee and its staff will make every effort to comply with the letter and spirit of the Massachusetts Equal Educational Opportunities Law, which prohibits discrimination in public school admissions and programs. The law reads as follows. No child shall be excluded from or discriminated against in admission to a public school of any town or in obtaining the advantages, privileges, and course of study of such public school on account of race, color, sex, gender identity, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, or physical and intellectual differences, and housing or immigration status. To accomplish this, the committee and its staff will make every effort to comply with the letter and spirit of the Massachusetts Equal Educational Opportunities Law, which prohibits discrimination in public school admissions and programs. The law reads as follows. No child shall be excluded from or discriminated against in admission to a public school of any town or in obtaining the advantages, privileges, and course of study of such public school on account of race, color, sex, gender identity, religion, national origin, or sexual orientation. This will mean that every student will be given equal opportunity in school admission, admissions to courses, course content, guidance, and extracurricular and athletic activities. All implementing provisions issued by the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education in compliance with this law will be followed.
Madam Chair? I just have a question.
I think there's a typo.
Because the way this is written, and it's the same with 1.16, and sorry to blend them both in, but in this, in the third paragraph, it ref, the second paragraph ends, the law reads as follows. There's no reference in the law as it's written to housing or immigration status. And sorry, back to 1.16, in the final paragraph, it references all reasons why someone should register with a Title IX Compliance Officer, but again, housing and immigration status are not part of those. So are we being asked to add these in even though they aren't specifically called for in state law?
I believe this, there have been state laws that called for that, or let me clarify. Is it through Department of Education policies that these were added as categories? Do you?
I believe it's not state law, but the homeless is by guidance, is guidance from Department of Education, and I think the immigration status came as the, I can't think of his name, so the Department of Education Chair, Commissioner, got a letter at the beginning of the school year.
Yes, we were. These came to our attention when we had our coordinated program review, and we, they review all our policies at that time and found that we were missing these two categories. So I believe it's the Department of Education guidance that is requiring districts to add these two categories as protected status.
Requiring or suggesting via guidance?
I'll have to check.
Okay.
I believe required.
Immigration status was required, housing status, we did based, was suggested based on the commissioner's letter at the beginning of the school year about immigration status, and then this was asked for, to be reviewed by our legal team for submission to you.
So has this been reviewed by council already?
I mean, I don't see, I guess my question... I'm not seeing anything in the actual policy that references the statutory requirement for us to have this in here, I guess is what I'm...
We can provide that?
And I guess should the policy, because usually when we include something in a policy that is required by state law, we reference the specific law by chapter and section or whatever, or we, or we put it in, I guess to the extent that we're, and less so because, less so in 1.16, but in 1.16.2, we're saying it's gotta be based on, we're specifically calling a law out and how it reads, and the law itself does not require, now personally, I think that the, the access for, not so much housing, but for the immigration status, I think if it's given the 1.16, to then provide for extracurricular activities is a no-brainer. If they're allowed to be here, they should absolutely, you know, this is a requirement that they're, the participation that, that makes, I have no issues with that. I guess I just, it's unclear to me why we reference, we're adding things in, and the only references are to things that don't speak to the new things that we added. So it may just be adding something new, or like adding another line of reference point or noting what it is.
We can go back and find that original document. The, this came about as a finding that we're required to respond to out of our coordinated program review, and you have that in your packets, it's on page 13. We are, the legal standard is that we must provide accessibility of, this is the extracurricular activities, and all, all education has to be accessible to everyone, and the homelessness is, is part of that, and I believe immigration status is too.
No.
So maybe the law needs, just the wording of the law needs to be revisited? Maybe the law includes housing and immigration status? Maybe that just needs to be restated?
So we...
Is this something that we could have the council review to give us?
We certainly can. I do believe that it's, it is Department of Education policy, but I, but I will ask our legal firm to verify what the impetus is for the Department of Education and whether, to ascertain whether it's Massachusetts law or Department of Education requirements.
Yeah, I guess my, I guess my ask of counsel would be to help us make sure that, just to give us guidance on a new language within the policy. We're not questioning the findings in the CPR. It's just what should we, which should we use in the policy? So if we should reference?
Reference.
What would you reference?
The law.
Yep, yep. So maybe they could review that, and then we can...
Certainly.
Does that, feel that one for everybody?
Yeah, I agree. We're not fighting the inclusion, but the reference needs to be clear. One comes from a Dear Colleague letter, and the other one comes from Massachusetts law.
Right.
I'll ask him to review and provide that information. We did, because of the revision being more wholesale of the next policy, our legal counsel's office did review that one.
4.22?
4.22.
Okay.
So I'll ask him to provide the same information for the 1.16 and 1.16.2.
I read two, someone...
Are we in the midst of a motion on the second one?
Oh, before we move on, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I do believe that the language for 1.16.2, the language that is in the first paragraph needs to also be repeated in the second paragraph rather than, so the second paragraph is missing disability, I'm sorry, the third paragraph, disability, housing, or immigration status, I believe it should occur, the new language should occur in both places.
Okay.
So, instead of ending...
Here, plus disability.
So I'll...
At the end of the paragraph that starts with no children?
No child.
No child, that's an ad, there.
Shall be excluded, I believe this, because it lists...
Correct.
All of the categories it needs to list, and that was just a typographical omission.
I would check, because that's the law, and it's the same in both. The law may not, the law may not, I wouldn't change that without confirming directly. I think there was a letter from the, from the DOE that, no, you guys don't call it DOE.
D E S I.
I call it DOE, in my other job, but that, so I think before we say that the law reads that, we need to confirm that with counsel. And if we're just, if we're editing a little bit, it would be, so on 1.16.2, it'd be sexual orientation, comma, physical and intellectual differences, comma, housing, comma, or immigration status, just in the same thing for 1.16 in that third paragraph. We just added those on, but you need to just let it grammatically, you gotta comma.
Right, and physical and intellectual differences is also...
Yeah, that's not the same.
Not mentioned in the third paragraph.
So wherever we're talking about things, we need to confirm, one, whether it's law, specifically in the law, or suggested out of the Dear Colleague letter, and then also we want to make sure just, Jen just picked up on that, Miss Soul just picked up on that, to make sure that they're all exactly the same.
So will we redo the second reading? Because we might have...
No, we can do, we can do the third reading based on any, any of amendments that we've got to here, plus the questions, when we get the answers to the questions, then during the third reading, we can take our vote based on what we find out then.
And just before we move on to the last one, on page 12 of the report, they, on criterion number three, they talk specifically about homelessness as a protected category, does not reference immigration status. So I suspect that the immigration status is a suggestion out of the DSE, which we may have to put in, but it's not a law, it does not appear to be a law change at this time.
If I, if I can offer, corrective action has to be submitted and be verbatim said, you wouldn't be including housing and immigration status.
So which criterion is that, where it says that they want us to add immigration status? I'm not opposed to it, but if we're saying it was, it was corrective action, where, which one does it fall under?
When we had our corrective action meeting at the beginning of the school year...
So they didn't put it in the final report?
So the final report was created prior to the letter, because it was based on findings last year, so I asked how we should do things. I didn't get a direct answer, but instead got approval for our corrective action plan.
Okay. So they have correct, so they will make us do, make, take corrective actions that don't get highlighted in the... may have to put in, but it's not a law, it does not appear to be a law change at this time.
Corrective action had to be submitted and be verbatim said, you wouldn't be including housing and immigration status.
So which criterion is that, where it says that they want us to add immigration status? I'm not opposed to it, but if we're saying it was corrective action, where, which one does it fall under?
When we had our corrective action meeting at the beginning of the school year.
So they didn't put it in the final report?
So the final report was created prior to the letter. It was based on findings last year. So I asked how we should do things. I didn't get a direct answer, but instead got approval for our corrective action plan.
Okay. So they have correct, so they will make us do, make, take corrective actions that don't get highlighted in the final report? So they'll, you guys have discussions and meetings to go back and forth, but they don't put it in the final report? So, because even if they put it in the final report, it could be the corrective action that's already been taken. Do you know what I'm saying?
So the final report was drafted in the summer, and they finalized based on, the only thing that they said would change it would be if we had objections, factual objections. So basically, before we drafted and done in the summertime, the letter came out in the fall, and when we, after we met, talked about how this goes forward, we had to submit in writing what a corrective action would be. I asked specifically in an email, if now we should include in cases that, and I wasn't given a direct answer, and they told us, I didn't give this direct counsel about whether or not a corrective action was appropriate, and that we should submit it for approval. And so that's what we did. We included it in, thinking, okay, if we don't do this now, then a year from now, or whenever, we would now be out of compliance again. So we put in the corrective action, expecting if it wasn't something that they wanted, they would say, we don't approve this corrective action plan based on you included a category that wasn't, that was what I expected in this literal feedback. And we didn't get it, went forward with proposing, thinking that was the wisest course of action.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And we'll get to the presentation on the coordinated program review in a minute. We're kind of going backwards a little bit here.
I'm happy to read 4.22.
I think the secretary should do it.
Yeah, I know.
Actually, this one, this one's kind of, it's on.
Representative, you want to go before we begin reading?
So the girls' soccer team won the state championships this past weekend. The boys' football team are playing in the Super Bowl on December 2 at 1:30 in Gillette Stadium. And Mr. Caulfield's speech class students are entering in the Lions Club speech contest. There are a total of five entries.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
The NUPRAC will be on Friday, December 1 at 7:00 p.m., Saturday the 2nd at 3:00 p.m., and Sunday the 3rd at 2:00 p.m. They are still looking for more people to help with the babysitting, and the students should be aware, they want students that they can get service learning hours for that, so that would be helpful. Then we have Ms. Elise Malloy has been appointed as the part-time assistant principal at Clyde Brown. In the middle school, the eighth grade will be attending a Christmas carol on Thursday, December 21 in Providence. And the high school, there are picture retakes next Tuesday, the 28th. The play this past weekend was well-attended and a great success. And there will be a lip sync battle between a group of teachers and high school students on December 7 at 7:00 p.m. in the auditorium. The tickets are $3 for students, $5 for adults, and it's a fundraiser for the senior class.
Thank you very much. Thanks for bearing with us, I'd be red clothed.
Happy to be extended.
Now you have consideration to approve.
I make a motion for the second reading of policy 4.22, physical restraint of students.
Second.
To move in seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
I want to do further discussion. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right. So Mills Public School, policy 4.22, physical restraint of students. Maintaining an orderly, safe environment conducive to learning is an expectation of all staff members of the Mills Public Schools. Further, students of the district are protected by law from unreasonable use of physical restraint. Such restraint shall be used only in emergency situations as a last resort with the extreme caution after other lawful and less intrusive alternatives have failed or been deemed inappropriate. When an emergency situation arises and physical restraint is the only option deemed appropriate to prevent the student from injuring himself or herself, another student, or school committee member, community member, a teacher, or employee, or agent of the school district may use such reasonable force needed to protect students, other persons, or themselves from assault or imminent serious physical harm. The definitions of forms of restraint shall be defined in 603 CMR 46.02. The use of mechanical restraint, medication restraint, and seclusion is prohibited. The use of prone restraint, except as permitted under 603 CMR 46.03, or of any physical restraint in a manner inconsistent with the regulations at 603 CMR 46.00 is also prohibited. Physical restraint shall be considered an emergency procedure of last resort and shall be prohibited except when a student's behavior poses a threat of assault or imminent serious physical harm to themselves and/or others, and the student is not responsive to verbal directives or other lawful and less intrusive behavior, interventions are deemed inappropriate. Superintendent will develop procedures identifying appropriate responses to student behavior that may require immediate intervention. Methods of preventing student violence, self-injurious behavior, and suicide, including crisis planning and de-escalation of potentially dangerous behaviors among groups of students or individuals. Descriptions and explanations of alternatives to physical restraint, as well as the school's method of physical restraint for use in emergency situations. Descriptions of the school's training requirements, follow-up procedures, and procedures to comply with the reporting requirements, including, but not limited to, making reasonable efforts to orally notify a parent of the use of restraint on a student within 24 hours of its imposition, and sending written notice to the parent within three school working days. Procedures for receiving and investigating complaints regarding restraint practices, methods for engaging parents in discussions about restraint prevention and use of restraint solely as an emergency procedure, procedures for conducting periodic review of data and documentation on the use of restraint and required, as required by the regulations, and the use of timeout as a behavioral support strategy, including a process for obtaining approval from the principal or his or her designee for a timeout exceeding 30 minutes. Each building principal will notify, will identify staff members to serve on a schoolwide resource to assist in ensuring proper administration of physical restraint. These staff members will participate in an in-depth training program in the use of physical restraint. In addition, each staff member will be trained regarding the school's physical restraint policy and accompanying procedures. The principal will arrange training to occur in the first month of each school year, or for staff hired at the beginning of the school year within a month of their employment. Physical restraint is prohibited as a means of punishment, or as a response to destruction of property, disruption of school order, a student's refusal to comply with the school rule, or staff directive, or verbal threats that do not constitute a threat of imminent serious physical harm to the student or others. Physical restraint is prohibited when it is medically contraindicated, as previously documented by a licensed physician. The use of timeout procedures during which staff continuously observe and remain immediately available to the student shall not be considered seclusion restraint. This policy and its accompanying procedures shall be reviewed and disseminated to staff annually, and made available to parents of enrolled students. The superintendent shall provide a copy of the physical restraint regulations to each principal, who shall sign a form acknowledging receipt thereof.
You have thought on that? You just wanted to read, right?
Yep. I just have one question, it doesn't have to amend. The notification timing. Notifying a parent within 24 hours and sending written notice to the parents within three school working days. Seems like kind of a long time. Not necessarily the 24 hours, but the three working days? Is that? I don't know. I mean, it's obviously what's in the requirement, but I just think, if we're required to notify, I think the written notice, unless there's like multiple layers of approval and documentation that needs to go, that needs to be done over the course of three days, but if we're sending parents an email, letting them know what, I don't know what the written documentation.
It's a formal, it's a formal report.
Okay, all right. That works.
So on the oral notification within 24 hours, are we making every effort to call before the end of the school day?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. I get that it gives us some time, but I would hate for a kid to be, go home on a bus and have to hear about being restrained, the parents have to hear about being restrained from the child opposed to an administrator or a teacher.
Absolutely. I think, Dr. Marks, would you like to come on up? And Joan, for the next part of the program, anyway?
We've not had a documented, we've not had a restraint reported, or having to be reported in the last, well, since I've been here, so two and a half years.
Okay. All right.
Anything that is unexpected behavior, that's not in the child's particular repertoire, usually is, if it reaches that level, the principal makes a call almost immediately, if not sooner. And teacher, if it's something less than teachers usually write, or many teachers make calls, and many special educators make calls as well. Just on unexpected behavior, a child isn't acting typical today, or we're concerned. So I would say it's very quick, but the report is specific.
Okay.
Thank you. Can you make sure to speak into the microphone, just, we have some sound challenges.
Thank you very much for hearing us. We had a brief introduction to coordinated program review. It has some very specific parts, and I think that we're still navigating how best to go forward. In general, we're happy to be here tonight to tell you, we had some really wonderful results, and some great compliments by Department of Education when they were here, both times, both for the visit and the interviews, as well as when they came for corrective action and met with us about how that process goes. So just to review, I had shared this with you two years ago, I think when we were just beginning, and special education, civil rights, and English language learner education were the areas that Milis was seeing, all school departments are seeing, but some of them also include CDTE and other topics, and if they have a large homeless population, it might be a McKinley-Vento review as well. But these are the main components and the ones that we were seen for. So basically, this is our timeline, this is what we've been working at. We did report back to you when we were having our site visit, and let you know what was going on when they were here. As Dr. Marks mentioned, it was a wonderful visit, and they were very supportive of the work that we were doing, and it has been a great process to go through. In addition to the ones that we were just talking about, because of our programs being so small, part of the CPR, which was done strictly by us submitting documentation, also included Title I and Title II-A. And we came through with those with both, with no issues at all. So we didn't include any of these, there weren't any findings, and so we were able to sort of breeze through both of those. But I did want to mention them, because they are part of the bigger process. During the interview, and Department of Education isn't known for casting large compliments around, and we know that they are trying to change their approach about gathering evidence and recognizing some things. So some of the remarks that they made to us, both in person as well as in writing, we were so pleased to hear, that our staff was professional and competent, and soulful was a word that was used. It was interesting, at the end of one of the days, the gentleman who was actually organizing the interview, she, he said, I just find this place and these people, um, soulful. I thought, well, that's, that's pretty wonderful. They could see how much we cared about our students, and how we worked in sometimes in small spaces, or, and folks just had wonderful attitudes, and could talk about the great things that we were excited about doing. Staff's invested, and really wants to know students. That came through loud and clear, which was really interesting, because that's been a topic for us, right, in personalized learning. Programmatically, and this was a precursor, mind you, when we were just beginning to talk about social emotional learning and piloting this year, and they heard it, so people were already talking about creating supportive areas there. In the elementary school, using Swiss system, which is a data system for tracking PBIS data and behavioral data, they complemented that. Tiered systems of interventions at the lower level being so fully articulated and easy to follow, and having great results was something else. And at the high school, doing a, also intervention group that talks about how to support students rather than referring them to special education, which is something that's difficult to happen at a high school level, so they were really impressed that there was a process in place, and it seemed to be used very efficiently by teachers.
So can you, can you go back?
Sure.
So the strengths do not surprise me, and it's good to see that, but where were the areas that we needed to improve? What areas did we need to work on?
It's coming.
Okay.
I believe you have a copy of this as well, as well as the report. So these were the areas. In the area of special education, there were no findings. And that 60 different criteria was looked at, and every one of them came through shining. So that speaks volumes to our special ed department and the work that was done to prepare for this. So that was, that was wonderful. In civil rights, there were 28 areas, and there were findings in those four bullets that we have mentioned.
Just so you know, we don't have that.
That page is not in there.
That page is not in there.
Oh, okay.
Which is fine. It's up there now.
Sorry.
I was reading ahead.
No wonder you were asking.
I was reading ahead.
So some of the things that, the four things that we recited on had to do with what you were just doing, was your reading of the new policies and the adjustments that need to be made. And then there were 18 criteria for English language education, and we had three findings for that. And those actually are not listed there. One of the things that I think was pretty amazing, too, was in the middle of this process, it wasn't considered a strength, but it was an absolute acknowledgement from the two gentlemen who came to do our site visit, was the challenges that are presented to small districts that have low populations. Because you're still required to do all of it, but yet you're doing it with, at the time, we were doing it with seven students. And we know that we've had an influx of more students coming this year, but they were acknowledging the fact that it is extremely challenging to find qualified people, teachers, as well as when you're doing it on such a small scale of part-time people. So three findings came through for English language learners. One of them was graduate credit. In our high school, what was happening was, we had two students, actually, I'm sorry, one student at the time, who, in addition to supporting him in our classes at the high school, which would have been freshman English, he needed to take a, sort of the prerequisite of English as a second language, English. And so one of the things was the fact that we had nothing in our program of studies that said that they would get graduate credit for taking that course as well. We, you know, we're very flexible, you know, we would be doing that, but the bottom line was, it was not in our program of studies to say we were doing that. So while he was getting credit for the courses he was taking, we didn't specifically have English as a second language for that student. And as it turns out, this year, we have two students in that case. So that is something that we're working with Bob and with guidance folks to get that in our program of study, that if students have to take English as a second language, English, then they would get credit for it. That only really pertains to the high school, because the rest of middle school and Clyde Brown, there's not graduate credit necessarily associated with that. The second thing that we were cited for had to do with our licensure. You know the challenges that we had in hiring our second person last year. And, and the fact is that we had not solidified the primary licensure for the Clyde Brown folks. So that is something that we've been taking care of, and we have a plan in place for getting our ELL teacher dual certified. getting our ELL teacher dual-certified in both elementary as well as secondary. And then, the last piece was really a paperwork issue. Once our students are no longer considered active ELL students, they're considered FELs, F-E-Ls, and that just means that they're formally English learners, and so we are required to monitor them, as well as meet with their teachers, and have follow-up documentation for four years after they no longer become active. And in one case, there was a file that didn't have the paperwork that was necessary, so we were cited on that piece, and so that is certainly something that we are, we are taking care of as well. And again, similar to the comments about what we were doing well, they were pleased with all other 15 of the categories that we were assessed on. So, sort of our next steps, what's coming up next for us?
I wanted to just say, oh, I just wanted to clarify, going back to school committee policy, so you saw some of the changes. As far as the restraint policy, what we did was separate our procedure from policy to simplify it, and that way we can change procedure as needed and don't have to come back here quite as often. The scheduling time on learning has to do with how we use study halls and how we talk about it, and the end date for seniors in classes, and how we discuss that last few weeks that they spend doing their project, their senior project. The handbook websites and documents, what we found is that it's really difficult when there's a policy change or you add gender identity, to make sure we've checked all the boxes, that is, the website changed, or the letterhead's changed, all of that. So, what we have is created now a checklist, a documentation and publication checklist, so when something changes, whether it's a policy, a Dear Colleague letter, or something we want ourselves to change, that we sit as an administration team, and we identify what it is, when it's going to change, how it's going to change, who's going to do it, et cetera, and then hopefully that can happen. And using a lot more electronic resources, rather than having hard copy handbooks, having them electronically so that you're not keeping track of 99 changes before you issue it the following year. So, that was one of the ideas. And then the last one, and we'll talk more about later as we develop it, but what we're telling you now is what they told us we needed to do, then we developed a plan, sometimes the plan was how we're going to develop a plan to correct it. And in cases like policy changes, those are easier, but things like self-evaluation, perform a self-evaluation of the district, saying that we allow access for all protected classes to all things, is the layman's terms, but it's not an easy process, as you can imagine, but it can start with things like surveys to see what the perception is, because it is all about perception, not all about perception, but part about perception, as well as data review. So, we suggested that we were going to create a couple of people, a little task force, that we're going to come up with some, using some models, going to come up with a process for this self-evaluation. We'd let them know the progress they were making, because part of this is very specified. What are you going to do? What's the timeline? When's the progress report going to be? They give us feedback if they think we've made the progress that we want, and then we get final approval. Right now, our plan is scheduled to be completed by end of April, even though they give us until one year from the report issue, which would have been mid-September. So, we're giving ourselves a lot of time, should something not go as planned, or should we not quite under, you know, be able to meet their expectations.
And actually, this is what Sue Man was just talking about, was the sort of our next steps. We submitted the plan to address the plan, and we had our first, we had two of the criterias that we had to submit our first piece of documentation as of November 2nd, and both of those were approved, so they were pleased with what we were saying we were going to be doing. And now, our next deadline isn't until, the next due date is February, so we have some things due then, and again, it's a process of, we submit, we make the changes, as this says, all of these pieces of how we're beginning to plan, and we actually have a working document that has all of the other administrators and the appropriate parties that need to be involved with it, and what each one of them owns. So, it's sort of a running record of where we are and what needs to be done, so that we certainly don't miss any deadlines, or that we, you know, are sure that we're doing everything that we needed to do.
Oops. My goodness, we went backwards. Excuse me for that. So, tonight, we submitted the policies in excuse that they probably need to be revisited. I'll take some ownership of that. And the question about immigration status, I agree with you, it was, we kind of hedged our bets by including that in, thinking we don't want to have to come here again in a year and ask you to include it. When they accepted it, I thought then that was the right course of action to take. And as we talked about, we abbreviated the policy on physical restraint, so thank you for your time for that. Do you have any other questions?
I don't want you to take or read into our questioning of the immigration status, as we should have added. It's a question of, we have a policy, we have many policies that reference mass general law, we want to make sure that our references are correct.
Absolutely. Which was why we asked to begin with, should we include this? And when we didn't get a direct answer...
They should be giving you an answer.
Right. Yeah. Like, I think it was right to hedge the way that you hedged, but you would think that they would give you a little something.
Well, I think this is what, I think their position is, for some districts, there's maybe 45 things that they're trying to correct. If they were sending emails saying, "Will you accept this? Won't you accept that?", they probably wouldn't get to their formal process. So, I respected that, and I, so they accepted it.
Yeah.
Any other question?
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, same to you.
I'd just like to commend both Dr. Marks and Joan Lynn for this process. They've done an excellent job, truly very few findings. It was a lot of work. It involved a lot of staff members and gathering all the documentation, both special education and for our English language learners, so well done.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Do you have anything else for superintendent's report?
No. Other than, it was delightful to watch our sports teams this past Friday and Saturday, and look forward to continuing with Thanksgiving football, and then the Super Bowl. There was a tremendous drama production that also went on Friday and Saturday, which was another very well-done production.
Thank you. I do not have anything for the chairman's report.
I'm going to save it all up for the elementary school building committee report. There's some big news. Chairman's report, superintendent's report.
That's the last time we met.
It was, was it the 7th? Oh, I guess, did you already talk about it on the 7th?
It was, it was, the 7th. But, as folks know, if you've been in and around either Clyde Brown or the middle high school, the fence is up, the process has started for site preparation for the new elementary school. The elementary school building committee will be posting look-ahead updates every two weeks, so the first one was published over the weekend, and then on Monday, so they'll be on Facebook, on the town website, and on the school website. So, huge thanks to Dave Bush for being so fast and excellent in the turnaround on that. Thank you, Dave. So, that's really to keep the community abreast of what's happening with the project, to give them updates of what they can expect for the next two weeks. So, apparently, it's fairly standard in doing a building, a new building, that you do these look-aheads. So, that will be happening. There'll be updates from the project management team, and also from the construction folks. They'll do interviews for them, and they'll give updates on what their plan is for the next couple of weeks, and they'll post them every two weeks. The, I know the superintendent has been working very hard with Jody as well in the planning of the official groundbreaking, so this week saw communication back and forth with the MSBA, with state representatives, and officials to set a date, want to make sure that the MSBA would be able to attend. So, that is going to be Friday, December 8th. So, official invitations will go out to all town boards, members of the community, we publicized, so should be a great event to celebrate and put a shovel in the ground to mark the start of the project. The project is actually through permitting, as of a week ago, Monday, the planning board did the final round of permit approvals, the initial permitting process, so. It's great. Still on track for September 2019 opening, three weeks in, or one week in.
Yeah. It's nice that we had the town vote, and then just a couple days later, pretty much, the fences went up and things started. It's nice to see things just moving in action.
We were very fortunate in that the Board of Selectmen allowed us to proceed while all of that was still in flux. So, they gave approval for all of that work, which caused there to be no delay. So, to your point of being able to have that town meeting, so their support was very much appreciated to keep the project on track. School committee announcements. Ms. Sol.
I don't have any.
Nothing.
Mr. Catalano?
I don't.
I do not. Superintendent? No. Okay. Old business, new business.
Man, before we go off the old business, new business, I would like to know if we would be able to entertain a motion to go to executive session on the basis for strategy with regard to negotiation with non-union personnel. And I know it's not on the agenda, but I would ask that it be entertained under the guidance of emergency or unforeseen as it relates to a, an announcement of a non-personnel hire to be effective on Monday that the committee was not aware of.
So, I would entertain a motion to move to executive session under...
Second.
Number three. Okay. So, with no other business on the agenda, we'll take a roll-call vote to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session. Mr. Catalano?
Aye.
Sol?
Aye.
Mr. Catalano?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Okay. So, we will adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session, and our next meeting date will be December 5th. Thank you, everyone, and happy Thanksgiving.